I can do better.
We know, but.
Snuggle up.
All right, welcome to our little quasi Selectmen's meeting. We have two legislators with us today, Matty Doct, he's not here yet, and Cheryl Golick, who will start it off and give us a little overview of what happened.
Okay. Hi, I'm.
What the heck happened?
So, I'm Cheryl Golick, and I represent House District 99, which as you know is all of Harpswell and part of Brunswick. And I'm here today because I was asked to give a brief overview of some of the bills that we've passed. And I'd love to capitalize on a bunch of highlights, but I'm going to just speak about one. You know, many people hear that Republicans and Democrats don't always agree. And we don't. But, and I wanted to highlight that throughout our committees this year, we passed unanimously 1,048 bills. So I would just want everybody to know that how impressive that is, that we actually agree on way more things than we disagree on. So that was the highlight for me this session. And should I just start?
Sure. You go. You're on a roll.
So I was asked to be here to cover four bills, and I'm going to be honest right off this bat, I'm not the expert. So I'm going to give you some overviews of what I do have for notes for these bills, and then some connections with the experts that can answer any other questions. And when the Senator gets here, she may be able to add to these things. So we have this new bill, LD 1829, which is an act to build housing for main families and attract workers to main businesses by amending the laws governing housing density. To start off, so LD 1829 builds upon LD 2003 by making the following changes. Designated growth areas and areas served by public water and public sewer. Minimum lot sizes for residential housing cannot exceed 5,000 square feet. Local ordinances related to setbacks, variances, et cetera, still must be satisfied. This aligns zoning policies with smart growth by ensuring lot sizes reflect what most planners deem good with growth areas. Larger lot size requirements should apply to non-growth areas where housing expansion is least desirable. It also provides a 14-foot height bonus to developments that qualify for affordable housing density bonus. This corrects an oversight in LD 2003, where a development would qualify for the density bonus but cannot take advantage of the additional units because the only way to build the units would be to build up. It provides a rewrite to LD 2003 regarding additional units allowed where previously only single-family homes were allowed. The rewrite makes this section of law far easier to understand. This section of LD 2003 was the cause from the greatest amount of confusion due to the convoluted allowances based on variants, various scenarios. It treats developments with four or fewer units the same as a single-family home as it relates to municipal review. These developments will no longer be subject to planning board review. Instead, they will be subject to a staff review. A development with four or fewer units may still need to be before a planning board for historic review, proposed roads, et cetera. It requires planning board members to attend a training within 180 days of appointment or election. The training may be provided by the municipality, a statewide municipal or planning organization, or the main office of community affairs. It changes the subdivision review of a structure from the current three or more dwelling units to five or more dwelling units. Finally, it prohibits municipalities from adopting rate of growth ordinances in designated growth areas. Municipalities may still adopt motoriums. LD 1829 is focused on incremental light-touch density. It will make it more viable for someone to build a duplex or a three-unit in the areas of town that the community has identified for growth. It will by no means accelerate growth in a manner that is inconsistent with the current pace. However, instead of seeing development move more and more towards the low-density part of the communities, LD 1829 attempts to redirect growth where density is preferred, such as near services or infrastructure, et cetera. LD 1829 still requires proposed developments to prove adequate infrastructure. In other words, if there is not adequate water or sewer capacity, LD 1829's provision does not trump the ability to serve letters from the respective utilities. LD 1829 adopts recommendations from the H.R.A. report that was released in January. This report identified strategies the state could adopt to move the housing production needle. We need 84,000 units statewide by 2030 to keep pace with demand and support our workforce and our state's economy, and to ensure that every Mainer has safe, affordable place to call home. LD 1829 will be subject to rulemaking. Municipal leaders are strongly encouraged to review the rules when they are released for public comment to provide feedback. Furthermore, municipalities with council governments will have until July 1st, 2026, to adopt any necessary changes to align with LD 1829. I do want to say that I think the letter that was sent to the town from Drummond and Woodsons, the report, gave a very good overview of 1829 to the town. And I also want to add that I have spoken to Hillary Grove and her colleague Ben Everell of the Housing Opportunity Program Coordinators for the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development. These are the experts who can answer more questions you may have on LD 1829. I am working with them to set up something for the first week of September, and also in hopes of getting answers for question on 1751. I am waiting to hear back from the Municipal Planning Assistance Program in hopes of setting up a meeting to coordinate with the Housing Opportunity Program Coordinators on the same day. And my hope is we can do that, and they'll come to the town, and we'll be able to set up something like this to get direct answers, the people doing the rulemaking and overseeing it. I'll stop there. I don't know that I can answer any questions, and then I'll move on to the next bill if we want.
Any questions from the field?
I've got some questions.
Would you go to the, yeah. We need to hear your lovely voice, Amy.
Oh, yeah. That's what my husband says.
Yeah, that's not what he says.
Amy Hyble, I am the Chair of the Planning Board in town. What I see this legislation as is an honest attempt to solve a real problem. However, I don't think that the solutions have been well thought through. As someone that has a master's degree and several decades in land use planning, I think there are a lot of issues that are going to come up in the short term and in the long term that have not been considered. For example, I think you're going to see towns, municipalities designating fewer growth areas as a result of this legislation. Because there are going to be traffic problems, there will be water and sewer issues, there will be issues with not just transportation, but issues with overcrowding. There are lots of different things that I think you haven't thought of that are going to come up. Essentially, this is an unfunded mandate. So you've taken, not you personally, but I think the legislature has taken a real problem and then moved it off onto municipalities and local governments, and then said, "We've done our job." One of the things that I think is going to cause a problem is removing the limit from three lots and increasing it to five lots. What is that going to do in rural areas?
I'm not an expert on that, but I don't believe it's three lots.
Okay.
It's structured.
Three units.
Yes.
Three structures of three units. Okay. Okay, I'll look at that. The other thing is allowing parking requirements to be met if there's a parking area within a quarter-mile distance of an affordable unit. What that essentially means is that those who have to live in affordable units have to, could potentially have to walk a quarter of a mile with anything that they have to carry in order to get home. That means groceries, that means suitcases and luggage, that means kids, that means women or disabled people, women who are pregnant or disabled people have to walk a quarter of a mile. I just don't think that's been thought through.
I would like to say I do believe that that's a different bill.
It is a different bill.
That is a different bill.
Yeah, it is a different bill, but I'm looking at all of these things together. Did you vote for these bills?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Except for one of them.
Okay.
That's what I'm going to talk about.
Okay. I think there are safety issues with regard to that as well, asking people to walk a quarter of a mile. How do you know that the distance will be lighted? How do you know that it will be safe for people to walk from the parking lot to wherever their home is? I'm raising this as an issue because I don't think it's been thought of. The height allowance, you've already heard, there are.
Can I ask just a second quick?
Yeah.
Did you submit testimony to any of these bills?
I did.
With your concerns?
I did.
Okay.
I did. The height allowance also, I submitted that, I'm not the first person by any means to say this, but you're, again, another unfunded mandate. You're asking rural fire departments to be able to handle height restrictions that they may not be able to handle, new height limits that they may not be able to handle, purchase new equipment. I'm not telling you, I'm sure you haven't heard, anything you haven't heard. Also, just prohibiting planning boards from reviewing things. This is like, it's a disincentive for people to get involved in their local community because you are preventing them from really fulfilling their interest and their desire to participate by prohibiting them from looking at certain things. And if there's no point, then why bother? So one of the things that we love about Maine is the ability for the average citizen to get involved and to make a difference in their community. And when the state starts pushing stuff like this, it reduces the quality of input that local residents can have in their community. So I don't think that has been thought through either. There are some other things as well. I had a question. I'm looking at LD 1829 and Section 7. It says, "Use allowed notwithstanding any provision of law to the contrary except Title 12, Chapter blah, blah, blah. In any area in which residential uses are allowed, including as a conditional use, a municipality shall allow at a minimum three dwelling units attached or detached, including accessory dwelling units, per lot." So Harpswell now has a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Have you just usurped that?
I haven't usurped anything.
Did you vote yes for this?
I did vote yes.
So has that been usurped now?
Sure, if that's what you want to call it. If you can just stop for a second so I can respond to some of the many, many things that you've said.
Sure.
One, I would ask that if any technical questions that you have, that you ask the bill sponsor or the people who are putting into the rulemaking, because I don't have answers for that. What I will say to you is, our state needs 84,000 housing units, and our town needs housing units. And our town is the oldest town in the state, and we're growing older by the day. We currently have a comprehensive plan from 2005 that has designated growth areas in it and places for affordable housing. And the reason we did that, I clearly remember because I was there when it happened.
So was I.
Because at that time, we had fishing families moving out of our town.
Yeah.
And I just, I'm trying to direct the need for a town, this is statewide law that will affect it, but the need for a town is also there. It also clearly states that if you do not have infrastructure, if it is not within these means, you will not be able to build these things. If you don't have enough space, you're not going to be able to build them. If you don't have enough water or infrastructure or sewer. But I do, what I do think is that while this doesn't force anybody to build anything, it gives people an opportunity, especially, you know, accessory dwelling units. And a town with an older population, we have a lot of people that live in larger houses. Maybe they want to downsize and put an ADU inside their house, or put one outside their house so that their family can move in and help them think.
We've already adopted.
So I see this bill as an opportunity for our state, and our state is responsible for making sure that we reach our housing goals, because if we don't, our economy fully depends on it. We have an extreme workforce shortage. And if we, as a collective, as an entire state and of communities, don't start pitching in to help figure out these things, all of us, our small towns, this town right now is a business owner, I can tell you, none of us have enough employees. We don't have enough sternmen, we don't have enough restaurant workers, we don't have enough healthcare workers.
I understand.
And that's going to ripple into our volunteer programs.
Yeah, I understand.
So I just wanted to respond to some of the things that you said as far as usurping. And to also be very clear, I'm not the expert on this bill, and I'm not a lawyer.
Okay.
And so I don't have those technical questions that you're looking for, such as Section 7.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your service. If you're going to vote on, to approve something, then I think you should be able to answer questions about it and not bypass the question by saying you're not the expert. So I would appreciate that. I do think this is an unfunded mandate. I think that you are, that the state is going to end up regretting what it's done. I think the unintended consequences of this legislation are going to be, in some places, pretty dire. So thank you for listening and really appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing those concerns. I appreciate your opinion on that.
Anyway, Cheryl, for a second, one of the problems we're up against, you know, we have two committees going. We have the Comprehensive Plan Committee for the last three and a half years. I was part of that till Matt came on board, and I was part of the Housing Committee. The Housing Committee with this great report that the Select Board adopted, and we liked it. The Com Committee now, they don't even want it mentioned. You know, there's a group in town that they don't want to see any building, they think we're running out of water, we're running out of this, we're running out of that. So just running up against these people that basically, not my backyard. You know, a lot of communities have, every community, Scarborough, Cape Elizabeth, Cumberland.
And don't mention short-term housing, whatever you do.
I didn't bring that word up.
I'll bring it, I'm going to bring it up.
But that's what we're up against in town here. We've got a bunch of people. The three of us are from here. We have a different perspective than a lot of people. You know, my family's been on Bailey Allen for early 1700s. I worry about where my kids are going to go. You know, I live on Doughty Point. You go down Doughty Point, the left side of the road, which is on the water, all the houses are one and a half and two million now. My neighbor's house just over 2.6. You know, so there's an invasion going on, which is fine, a lot of, you know, they're great people, I like them a lot. But where are the kids going? You know?
Well, I, I'll just speak frankly and casually to that. I, you know, I have a 34 and a 35-year-old that can't afford to live in this town, that I'd love, they would love to be able to afford to live in this town. Also, as a representative, I take great pride in reaching out to as many people as I can. And I've spoken to thousands and thousands and thousands of people over the last three years in this town, you know. I've knocked on thousands of doors. And what I was humbled by was, no matter the income level or what, at least every third house, you know, and I show up at somebody's door, the first thing I ask them is, you know, can you share with me what your issues are at the state level? And it's housing.
Yeah.
For what you just said. You know, whether they're of a higher income level is that their kids can't afford to live here. And, you know, I've lived in this town for more than 30 years, and I've lived here when I was younger and when I was a teenager and stuff, and was born right in Coast Corner. So I've watched the change, you know, and like I said, back in 2001, it became very prevalent that we were losing our young families and we were losing our fishing families. And a lot of those answers were built into the current comprehensive plan that we had. Sadly, that was 20 years ago, and we never achieved those.
Nothing was ever.
Those needs.
No.
You tried.
And so as a representative, I just share that with you, that housing, and I would share with you that there are, you know, conversations with, when you mention affordable housing, people envision the big buildings that have been built on the base.
Yeah.
They envisage impairment drive. But once you have a conversation with somebody and say, "That's not ever going to be able to be in Harpswell."
No.
And that's not what it looks like, you're talking about maybe a duplex, you know, it can look just like the home that you're living in.
Yeah.
And stuff like that. So, you know, we as a town, I've watched this for years. We come together, we figure it out, we pull it together, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we're going to find some kind of a balance, and it has to be a balance, you know, with housing and with the other issues that we as a town have.
Statewide, that's the biggest, that's a big issue. Every town.
It is a statewide, it's a big issue in every town, it's a national issue. And, you know, it's also, if you throw on top of that, is we have a severe workforce shortage.
Yeah.
And we cannot rebuild our workforce without affordable housing. We can't. And when I say affordable housing, you know, that's our teachers, our firemen, our police department, and others, you know, it's down, that average wage earner, that right now are paying more than 55% of their income and working two and three jobs. Nobody can afford market-rate housing in Cumberland County right now. So it's at an average, average wage. So it's a problem statewide, and every community is going to have to figure out what their community needs and stuff. And at a state level, we just have to keep plucking away on how to create opportunities so that communities can work towards those things.
I have a couple of questions, clarifying questions about the bill, because I understand that it was actually a committee amendment that ended up being adopted over the original bill that was presented. And I will admit, I was more up to date on the original bill than what ended up being passed. And I remember in the original bill, there was some language that created a state board that was kind of in line with the Superior Court for housing reviews. Did that end up being included in the amended version?
You know, man, I would have to go through the detail of the bill. And like I said, I'm trying, I'm going to set up, if people want, where that type of a question can be, can be answered. My hope is.
That was where some of my concern lied, is if that, and I'll have to read it more myself to see if that was adopted, because I mean, that completely dismantled the Home Rule authority that is set place in the state constitution. If you're allowing a state board to make decisions for individual towns, and this board is appointed, who's to say it's not just a bunch of developers that are lining their own pockets, you know, that don't have any idea about what's happening in town? The other thing that was in the bill that I'm not sure if it got included or not was, here in Harpswell, I think we've done a pretty good job at starting to open up the ability to build more ADUs, and I think that's a good direction to go to kind of combat this affordable housing issue, is allowing ADUs and stuff like that. But one thing we looked at in town here is not allowing those ADUs to be short-term rentals, because that does nothing for housing, really. You know what I mean? And originally, this bill did not allow municipalities to ban ADUs being used as short-term rentals. So what some of my fear is in Harpswell, is that we get a bunch of these ADUs built on people's property, because anyone can build them, whether they reside year-round or not now. And they just get turned into short-term rentals, and we gain no housing stock out of it. We just get, I mean, it brings in money for some people that don't live here, you know, if they're just sitting back collecting money. And my other concern, and this comes from a personal level, as somebody who before I lived in the house that I purchased now, I was renting a house that was an ADU, and we had a house fire, and there was no sprinklers. And I almost died. If I didn't have a smoke detector, I wouldn't be alive today. That's what saved my life, was the smoke detector. And if we had had sprinklers, I wouldn't have lost $85,000 worth of my belongings. So to see the requirement for sprinkler systems be reduced, if anything, I would have liked to have seen that increased, because it doesn't matter if you can afford your house or not if you're dead. And that also falls into the height restriction that happened, in that we only have the ability in this town to get to a building that's 35 feet high. If we allow people to build 14 feet over that, we don't have a ladder truck that can get to that height at this point.
That's, okay, so I will double-check on the height thing, but my understanding is it's like, that's two stories. It's not three, four.
Yeah.
And two stories, it's not adding on a three-story building.
It, would it be adding on a two-story building, though?
No, in my understanding, it's, in my understanding. But I will clear, I will get that clarification for you for that. The ADUs and short-term rentals is an issue across our state.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm going to speak personally for myself. I also believe that towns have the ability to look into regulating that themselves, if they choose to.
This bill removes that.
But ADUs also, it's complicated, because you've got some, somebody who might just have a duplex or a single-family home that needs an extra income to pay their mortgage and their taxes, and it provides that, for that, you know, it provides them to downsize. It's not just a black and white issue. It is complicated. There's been many bills up before the State House to try to address it from registries and whatnot. Brunswick now has a registry for rental units and stuff, which gives them a wider view. Some towns and some places are looking at taxing them differently if they're not in the affordable means and stuff. So I think that's a discussion at a local level.
Yeah, I mean, this bill specifically says that it prevents a municipality from requiring the owner of a lot where an accessory dwelling unit is located to reside on the lot. So it literally takes away our Home Rule authority of being able to stop these short-term rentals.
I hear your question with the bill. Let me get the experts in here, and you can get those questions through them.
And we don't discuss short-term rentals anymore.
The discussion so far is about housing, obviously.
I can see. I'm sorry I'm late, everybody. I'm Matty, I'm your state senator, and it just took me an hour and 52 minutes to get from Portland to here. So if you know anyone who's on 295, there's two accidents.
Nice.
So I'm sorry I'm late.
So I gave a breakdown of what 1829 does.
Yeah.
And then Amy, Everell, asked a bunch of questions about it. And to give you a little update, I spoke to Hillary Grove and stuff, and I'm going to try to get from the Economic Community Development to arrange a sit-down with them for people, because they're the experts doing the rulemaking and stuff in the Maine Municipal Plan.
That's great. And I would say, you know, I'm trying to look through all the statements on 1829, because I do not serve on the Housing Committee, and not my bill, but have heard many different concerns, and have some of my concerns as well. Like I share everything that Cheryl just said about the short-term rentals. I mean, it's one of the major reasons, I mean, I graduated, not to date myself, Brunswick High School in 2005, and most of my friends that we've been trying to stay in Brunswick or Harpswell have had to move away, in a large part is for short rentals, short-term rentals. And I think the biggest thing, I don't know, did you mention the listening sessions yet, Cheryl?
No.
So there are two, and I was trying to find it, the next listening session for the rulemaking on this bill, where they need to hear exactly like you're saying that, about, you know, what the height limit is. That's something else I've heard from other communities of, "We can't have a building over X because our fire truck literally can't get into the building." They're going to have two of those listening sessions, and they're going to come out with a rule and have another listening session. The first one's actually tomorrow from 10 to 11. My amazing legislative aide, L., we can give people the Zoom link, and they're having a second one as well, that I'm trying to find in here. But like, for example, some of the concerns that I've heard and also share is a little bit on, you know, the wastewater portion, not to really dig into the weeds, but making sure there's correct oversight on that. Also, one of the other ones was the height and making sure that it doesn't exceed that. I do really like the bonuses that this bill puts in to try to emphasize an affordable housing on the state level, and like, really, I think that's something we need to push. This is not a municipality thing, this is a legislative and quasi-governmental agency thing, that mainstay housing really needs to get pushed harder about like, what models work for a homeowner and a community on that local model. And we are seeing, in some of the areas, the zoning as far as lot size, I think that is a good area to have. One of the first questions I actually asked Speaker Fecto was the question about the public water and sewer, and like, what that sort of level is. So yeah, I think it is, I know this is a passion of the speaker, and the Housing Committee has done incredible work, and I want to give a huge shout-out to Cheryl, and this committee has been working tirelessly. You guys have been, this is one of, what, 80?
Yeah.
Different bills on housing, and it is clear that this one needs that intense feedback on the rulemaking process as well, so.
I just want to add to that, with the height limits, why I said I'd get back to you, Matt, with that, is there was a big discussion about that and clarification with the fire trucks and need to add that. So I do believe that there was supposed to be, I do believe that there was an amendment made in that, to make sure, to clarify.
Oh, yeah. The height was. Oh yeah, the height was, I just clarified, the height is only on a bonus for incentive for financing, not for allowable ability, which is a good distinction. And so the, there's a listening session tomorrow and then the third listening session is Thursday, August nineteenth from one to two. So if anyone would like to, I can just get folks' emails and we can send the Zoom link for people.
I'm sorry, what was the time on that?
It was one to, two P.M.
Thank you, sorry.
And then tomorrow's is from ten to eleven, so.
And what I learned from sitting through, uh, I, uh, not the listening session yesterday, but through, um, a meeting that was held with the Brunswick Town Council was that, um, make sure I say it right, the Hillary Grove, the main Department of Economic Community Development will be doing the rulemaking stuff, but they don't do, cover the subdivision sections because that's statutory.
Yeah.
It's different than rulemaking, which is why I'm trying to get, uh, a meeting with both, both groups so that we can get both of those things answered.
Yeah, I agree.
Now that, that you're both here, I wanted to wait. Um, I'd like to thank both of you for, uh, really pushing that variance bill through for the town and expediting how fast that happened and, and that, especially if, being new in government, I've quickly learned how slow government works. So that was Yeah, that was extremely fast for, for government. So that was, that was very much appreciated and, and thank you both for your efforts on that.
Of course.
And I think that people are already starting to move ahead and, and start to get some stuff done because of that, so thank you.
I was actually in Freeport, uh, I think it was yesterday. It's been a blur of forty-eight hours and talking about some of the similar damages that they're seeing for their fleet in Freeport as well. And I was mentioning the bill and telling them about it, so it was an honor.
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole state's grateful that, um, it was brought forward by the town of Harpswell because it didn't, ended up benefiting our.
Yeah, I was glad to see it actually expanded statewide, really.
Yep. We took a lot less of a beating than a lot of the towns down east.
Yeah.
We're actually pretty lucky.
Yeah, no, I was working with, I also referenced Chabig Island and I was out, they got absolutely leveled. And, um, I got quite regularly and like the stone wharf was already an issue. And then those two storms just took a lifetime off that island, so.
So that was eighteen twenty-nine.
Yeah.
And I think we were moving on to seventeen fifty-one and I, I can start with that if.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay with that? Are we ready to move on to?
Yeah.
So what I would say about seventeen fifty-one, um, an Act to Improve Growth Management Program laws. Um, well, this was a measure I did not support and committed in order that I vote for it on the House floor. Um, the measure intends to give towns flexibility, saving time and money, making planning more accessible. The bill's sponsor, Representative Tiffany Roberts, worked hand-in-hand with planners and legal experts, uh, the main municipal association and state agencies to develop the bill. And I'm just gonna suggest right from the start, um, to get further in-depth information about this measure, I would, I would encourage people to reach out directly to the sponsor and the main municipal association. But when I said earlier that I, um, trying to get the Municipal Planning Assistance Program, uh, people here, they'll be able to answer all the questions of that. And to clarify, um, the bill's law, you know, so now it's learning how it works. I did not support it because there was another bill very similar to it, but all the environmental agencies supported that bill. And they did not support this bill, um, which is one of the reasons that I supported the other one and not this one.
Once again, I would defer to Cheryl on this, having not been on the committee digging down. But I do know one of the conversations was working with the environmental community on comprehensive planning frameworks and what the resources are on the state level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I've been trying to monitor that as well. It's a nice thing about having a delegation, especially a delegation that has members on the different committees, so.
Did we, the reason I asked about that was we're currently working, as Cheryl knows, you may as well, Maddie, um, we're working on a comprehensive plan. I was just trying to get an understanding of how that, of, because we're going to vote November on it, I hope. Um, and how that, does, is there a grandfather? Did we ever find out those answers, Margaret? If we were grandfathered with the plan or if our plan, because that's now been signed into law, if we have to amend it to, to meet some of these guidelines?
I will need to get back to you on that. I'll have L. check into that. But I would say the effective date of this will be, I think, September twenty-fourth is when I think all bills will technically become law.
That's ninety days after.
Yeah, so, uh, it's, it, we have closures the twenty-sixth, my dad's birthday is the twenty-third. So the twenty-third to the twenty-sixth of September, I have a few dates in my head. Um, but if you were to pass the comprehensive plan before that date.
And we won't, it will be voted on in November.
November, yeah, so.
But the final draft will be done by that date.
That would have to
That would work.
I mean, one, we can get you, uh, information on that. I would also check with your town attorney.
Right.
Not playing an attorney on, on TV, no, just kidding. Um, the, what I do understand from seventeen fifty, one of the most biggest impact on that is the update in terms, context. And there was one other thing that both bills, yeah, definitions. There's one other part about wetland mitigation that the other bill had the better terms, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because thi- this bill went under the hammer in the Senate, so there actually wasn't
Yeah.
A, a vote like there was in committee. Um, but yeah, it was really about sort of setting the state goals for planning, the definitions, and not as much of a sort of upheaval as I'd say the prior bill was.
True.
I think, you know, I think seventeen fifty-one got through because it was a smaller bill um, and easier to, for some, to comprehend and, and move. And the main municipal association and the planners, uh, were behind it. Um, and, um, the other bill that, um, I would have liked to see pass bigly because the environmental people had worked very hard on it, um, had about four to five years' work behind it.
Yeah.
Um, and
And this one was much quicker.
And, and this one did not.
This one changed the public comment period as well in a way that I don't particularly agree with, that the other one did not. It actually shortens the duration for public comment periods and comp plans, which my father chaired the comp plan review board in, in Brunswick for the two thousand and eight. And like I saw when I was in high school, them working on that. And I've, I've seen personally behind the scenes of what goes into that. And that's not something, I know how long it takes me to read all my legislative documents when I, when I get home. So that was one thing I was not, uh, a fan of in that bill, so. Do we have any more questions on that one?
I thought you got something.
Nope.
There was, there were questions.
All right.
You weren't getting to that one?
Oh, okay. He jumped into it if you want.
Yeah, I get a question.
I, I will, if I can't get somebody here to discuss that, I will, I will get contact information for people to be able to.
As I'm sure both of you are well-aware, I'm the commercial fisherman on the board. Um, so there's two others.
Yep.
Do you want to just talk? I, I was curious about fifteen oh-three, you know.
So fifteen oh-three, I'll just break it down real quick. Um, so I, I was working, trying hard to find some way to attack our green crab, um, invasion. Because, you know, I, I live in Curtis Cove and for thirty years I've been able to get mussels, clams, oysters, anything. And in three years, I watched it all just
Yeah.
Just gone. And, you know, um, and it still hasn't come back. Some of my yolk gas is coming back. Um, and then watching the reports and, and seeing the damage that it was doing and not really being able to find a market for it. So while I was doing this, um, I got a phone call from Representative Hepler. Um, there was a gentleman, John Painter, that, um, deals with green crabs that was trying to get something done that would open up just a sole license for green crab dealership. So you could have like just the separate license for it. You don't have to have your whole paid-for-fishing license, make it cheaper, make it more of an option. Let's open up this and try to, to, to build an industry with it, um, to get things going. So what the law does, the law establishes a green crab-only wholesale dealer license that will empower license holders to engage in wholesale trade, buying, selling, processing, shipping and transporting of green crabs directly from our harvesters. Um, the holder of a green crab-only wholesale dealer license may in wholesale trade, buy, sell, process, ship, transport green crabs purchased directly from the harvesters in Maine. Um, it's an effective way to combat green crab invasion while supporting our working waterfront. That's pretty much it in a lump sum. It's a pretty straightforward bill that opens up just a single
Yeah.
License, I think, fifty bucks, I think.
Does that remove?
And kids can get it and try to get it.
No, I, I hold what they call lobster and crab license, which allows me to keep lobsters and crabs. Does that, can I, not that I keep them, but I destroy them, um, the green crabs. Can I still do that as a lobster and crab license holder or do I technically, to be in possession of green crabs?
I think you can.
Do I need to purchase?
My friend and I were looking into this with his license and he said that they still could. And he was looking into getting this new license.
Yeah.
So that he's now thinking of, he's like, I'm torn between wanting to kill them with a thousand rays of sunshine and then maybe I can get it.
They are the most indestructible creatures in the ocean.
Sorry.
I was going to send you a presentation that was actually gonna be done on the green crab.
Yeah.
Um, but it was completely booked.
Oh, yeah.
Coming up this week, so, so, so I didn't, didn't send it to you. I'm still learning about them myself and, and high interest of what can be done with them and.
Yeah.
I used to haul my boat out in the winter and store it over the winter and then relaunch it again in the spring. And I have seen green crabs that have lived on the deck of my boat through the winter, through the ice, through the snow, and been alive the following spring.
Well, it took off because, um, we've had them, we've had them forever, right?
Yeah.
But even though they're invasive, we've had them forever. But our winters were so cold it kept them at bay.
Right.
And, um, so now we're not getting cold enough, long enough winters.
Yeah.
Last winter we did. We killed a bunch last winter.
Yeah, no.
The ice crushed them.
Just so out here, they did an up-run Surbury Creek.
Yep.
You, you look at the, uh, the banking, it, it just, it's collapsing upon itself.
So I'm hopeful, maybe we'll, we'll start making a dent, at least give it an auction.
You gotta convince somebody that could eat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have to say.
The Asian markets are usually the ones that buy the stuff that we.
Well, this is actually the other side of the partner, this, this is where like my, uh, wheelhouse and have been working on. And so I grew up on McCoy Bay, so we've been dealing with, uh, the same level of erosion with the green crabs. And I've literally watched, you know, my favorite place where we all used to hang out is literally now gone because of the erosion. Um, and was really, really excited to support this bill. Um, I have a couple of friends that have been working on creating a fish sauce out of the green crabs and buying them ad nauseam, fermenting them, trying to create a Maine-based product and bringing those to market. And they've been working with not only local chefs, I've gotten to make some amazing food. My life, I work in hospitality and service outside of the legislature, and so we've been able to start cooking with them. And I think that's one of these like really cool ways that we can take a really nasty entity and turn it into something really delicious. And then I also want to give a shout-out to a product. Um, I am totally blinking on the name, but I will look it up. But there is an amazing dog company out of Boston and some of the owners actually grew up in the Maine, uh, mid-coast area. And they are working with fishermen to buy bycatch and invasive, uh, species to turn into dog treats. And their green crab dog treat has finally gone to market. It's called Green Masada. I actually use it with my dogs and it's completely made out of kelp and, uh, green crabs. And they can use tons of green crabs in both of these things. So like seeing these different markets, uh, are really exciting and it's, it's just awesome. Oh yeah, polka dog. And then packaging is really, really cool. Like my dogs are obsessed with them. Um, see if I can zoom in so you guys can see them. But yeah, it's got like the green crab on like the dog packaging and like, and then I'm working with another friend that we've been like frying them and trying to offer them as like a seasonal special, but I, um.
Yeah, if you can, if you can make anything good, you gotta fry it.
Exactly.
That's the way to do it.
Soak it in butter.
Ferment it. I mean, I make beer, so I believe ferment anything and it gets better and then, you know, deep fry it. So anyways, I was really excited about this bill and I was really proud of Cheryl.
I think that, I think that does, I think that will hopefully, you know, that will maybe open up a new fishery for people too, you know? Because before they would have had to buy a lobster and crab license in order to do that type of thing.
Our shellfish committee's been doing that for years though.
Yeah.
The, the town has a bunch of crab traps and a lot of the harvesters have the traps and, and the town was doing it too.
Yeah, I've been down on the town a lot.
One of the things that was a problem even having that, that license, um, if I can explain it right. So John Painter, he, he green crab fishes, he also cooks, he's got all this massive knowledge about green crabs that I couldn't even begin to repeat. But, um, was how you could sell it, transporting, you know, and, and with, without this type of license. And, and it's kind of like piecemealing, trying to hang on to enough, but you can only get to so many. He was driving ninety minutes, um, to get the stuff. So this is gonna cut down some of that too, so.
Yeah.
I, I'm hopeful, at least it's a start.
They usually end up on Brooks Field in Brunswick.
Say it again?
They, they take them to Brooks Field in Brunswick and.
Yeah.
Yeah, good fertilizer.
Yeah, they roll them into the soil.
Yeah.
But a few years ago, they dumped truckload and they've been sitting there for ten days in the summertime, they dumped it. And half a dozen of, they were running into the woods.
We just need a nice little process and plant for all our shellfish.
Yeah, exactly. Need a lot more processing plants. That's another bill, another pet side passion.
Are there any good questions about that?
No, I just was curious to, to what exactly it did, but I think that's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
So Matt, you, you were also asked about fifteen sixty-one and, you know, we
This one's not good.
I have this one, I, this is entirely, I'm not.
So we, we had a conversation
I, I printed it out.
Back, back in June second and nothing's really changed since that conversation. Um, so I just.
It's passed and been signed into law is what's happened since then.
Well, so I, I can explain what this bill is. It's a resolve, it's a study regarding the percentage of a lobster and crab fishing license, these lobster traps that may be fished in a lobster management zone listed on the license as a secondary zone. Um, the resolve allows each zone council to see if there are any consensus for changing the percentage of gear that may be fished outside of a license holder's home zone. Um, since this is only a study, nothing has officially changed. Um, the measurement is meant to give zone councils more authority and involvement. And that was the reason I voted for this bill, because it was a study and it was seeking all the zone, uh, management and fisheries input. So, you know, if something comes out of legislation before it even gets to being drawn up as possible legislation, if it gets possible legislation, it will have hearings and public meetings, but
So it has to come back.
That legislation will be based on the information gathered.
Well, reading the bill, there, this resolve gives the Committee on Marine Resources the ability, once you've heard back from the zone councils, to change that percentage. And as of right now, three of the seven zone councils have voted to change the percentage. Two more are going to, so that's five out of the seven. The only zone that's not going to vote to change that percentage is Zone F. Because we need that ability to go other places. We live in the town with the most licensed lobstermen in the state. We live in the zone with the most licensed lobstermen in the state. We need the ability to spread out. This does nothing but pit fishermen against fishermen, really.
So this, this was Representative Hepler's bill.
Yep, because it came from Zone E, because they were sick of us coming into Zone E.
I, I hear all that. I hear all your frustration over it as being on the zone council and stuff. But this was also something the department itself wanted looked at because while we have this zone and it is one of the largest one, we're not the only one in the state. And so the Department of Marine Resources has to listen to all the zones. So they're trying to get some consensus that may work for everybody and they may not get there. And my understanding is it doesn't just allow a committee just to jump over through hurdles. If a bill's presented, it will come through the department.
Really?
Yeah.
And it will be, um, advertised and there will be plenty of time for public comment, public hearings and stuff on that. But right now, what you can, can do, Matt, as the leader of your zone area, is to explain all your concerns to your zone.
I, oh, I do. I sit on the zone council.
Have a question and answering sess- session with the Department of Marine Resources.
I have.
I do think our new commissioner, and I liked the old commissioner.
Yeah, Carl is excellent.
Our new commissioner is working very hard
Yeah.
um, at opening up more dialogue, uh, with not, not just lobster fisheries, but, but with other fisheries, which, you know, I presented your bill for that reason. I didn't believe that, you know, everybody was being involved enough. We didn't get it through. I felt like hell to try to get it through, but, um, we didn't. And, um, so, so yeah, I just think that it, I think it's an important bill because I hear all your concerns about, you know, uh, and I'm fully aware of what our fleet is and, and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
But as a state level is what the department covers, all, all the zones, so that, that's why this bill is in effect.
I guess my concern is that there isn't a fisherman in your zone that wanted to see this happen. I know, because I've spoken to them and I represented fifty-six of them on the zone council.
Not one person came and testified against this bill, Matt.
We, I, I admitted that, I was.
So there's no way for me to know that or anybody else to know that.
I did, this one slid through under the radar for sure. I mean, it was missed. Um, but you yourself have said that you like to listen to the experts. Did you reach out and ask any fishermen how, what they thought about it?
Well, no, I, I did not. I rely on people, okay, so I'm on basically three committees. Housing and, and economic development. Housing and, and economic development in one, and the Department of Marine Resources. And two of those overlap.
Right.
And besides the bills, the hundreds and hundreds of bills that we hear in there, I have hundreds, hundreds of bills that we hear and pass in housing and, and other work. So, um, public hearings are put out, the Department of Marine Resources put out about, information about this bill.
They stopped texting us, so a lot of us didn't get that bill when they, when they stopped texting.
I'm sorry to hear that. But anyways, it, it is, it was given, you know, adequate, just like a town meeting is given adequate notice and stuff so that people can come and testify and stuff.
But you will know, it's hard for a fisherman to take a day off and come up to Augusta or join a Zoom meeting at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Absolutely, but you can write, they can write something in ahead of time.
Yeah.
There's lots of easy ways to do it and I totally understand, um, and would be totally open in figuring out some weekend time, always have been. Um, and I, I do think those would live to experience. I'm the experts and, and will always listen to them. It's, what I will tell you was, was surprising to me on my first year of the Department of Marine Resources. Nobody shows up to testify.
Because we're all working.
I, absolutely, but there's other committees and people are working. I, we get five and six hours in housing, I get five and six hours in this committee and stuff. And when these big bills come up, it takes people to testify for or against them. Otherwise, we're left with the information that we're getting in that room.
I mean, that's why I'm in the position I'm in, because there's not enough of us that speak up.
You know, to, uh, to gather other information.
I'm just gonna throw out there, I think I share the same frustration with many. Like I've spent ten years on the education committee and when you have the education committee hearings is when teachers are in school. And I think that is one of the reasons that I have actually wanted to see more things go to a study or go to a task force or anything that gets it out of the traditional nine to five and requires multiple listening. And now I'm not saying this is necessarily that bill, but that is a problem that we've been trying to address in the legislature. We fought to increase the Zoom access. We are trying to find a way, um, the Speaker and I are right now pushing the legislature to put the committee hearings back up on YouTube. Cause our website, I don't know if you've gone and tried to access the video so you could see what happens in it. It crashes consistently. So we're trying to add that and then within the YouTube, uh, video of the hearing, have a dropdown so you can be able to contact directly. Because the reality is it can be really hard to get up there. We've done more than any legislature, like the Zoom was not something, you know, folks, when the pandemic goes over, they're like, oh, we're gonna get rid of this. I'm like, absolute freak.
Yeah, that does help a lot.
Yeah, like this is like, like I was, I had a bill on labor. We were working with the logging industry and most of the guys were, you know, zooming in from, literally from the cabs of their logging trucks. And it was the first time we were able to get a bunch of their voices involved in a bill. And I'd say, you know, I do keep out when these bills come through. I look for the zone, I look to see where Zone F is. On this one, you know, quickly looked, it went under the hammer in both chambers. And the only reason, you know, I, I like to say that we represent the area that people do not realize is the most dense working waterfront. They have no idea. Um, they think it's, I feel bad shitting on Stonington, but like, they, they like, that's the like, where they think the heart of it is and they don't realize that is in literally our district. Um, and this is not a given. I know, I don't know as well, but I do know the politics between them, having friends who hold the licenses and come up against this as well. Um, it is not a given. For something to happen, they have to have the report back. And yes, there have been those votes. The report has to go before the committee. The committee has heard pushback, not only from Cheryl, but from myself and from others who are within the zone, um, that it can't be used by other zones weaponizing against this one. Um, and then the committee has to vote to introduce a piece of legislation. Should that get there, then it has to go through the public process. So there's about five different, um, chances, not only for emergency breaks, but for public comment. And we can make sure, um, on the text message, like we can make sure that this bill is flagged for an IP list that we'll try to get out to you guys as well. At least very much on the report when it comes back to the Marine Resources, before it even gets to the public hearing, to be able to see what it goes for. But there's been many bills that I'm like, this is something I do not agree with or I have a lot of concerns. But when it goes to a study, I think it really is a good chance for, I mean, you, you got to see firsthand, you know, the committee process is not glamorous, it can be slow, but sometimes you need that like, out of the traditional nine to five committee setup, that I tend to allow, even if I don't agree with them, these studies to go forward. Because it's a chance to get feedback that we as legislators might not see, someone from the department may not see as well. So, but just, just to say, we are very well aware and share the same concerns about, you know, what would happen if Zone F is blocked from everyone else, so.
I like a lot of those ideas you had. Can we maybe get rid of concept drafts too?
So concept drafts. If you wanna hear the long, okay, how long do we have? Okay, so I want to be very clear that folks think concept drafts is something that's coming from legislative leadership. It is not. I share the same frustrations. We literally, so what people, I think one of the fun facts that people don't realize is legislators do not draft their own bills, which is a good thing. We have a nonpartisan office called the Revisers of Statutes. And so if Cheryl and I decided we wanted to introduce a bill to, trying to think of something silly, uh, name Harpswell the best community for lobster in the state of Maine. Talk about a surefire way to probably get attacked. But say if we wanted to put that in, we'd walk into revisers and say, here's our idea. Here's what we'd like to see for the language. They then come back to us and they're like, this is too vague. This should, you know, be a concept draft. And then we would say, no, it's very clear, Harpswell has the best community for lobstering. How can you not draft this? And you go back and forth. There's been a change in staff and I, these people are superheroes who write our bills, but we have a lot of new staff. And I watch things be turned into concept drafts that should not be concept drafts. So what it'll literally say is instead of like a fully drafted bill that has like all the different language, it'll say a concept draft and be like, this is a bill about lobsters.
Yeah.
And so we have pushed back and we had, I had a bill of my own that was fully drafted. Uh, I'll be honest, regardless of where you might feel on it, paid family medical leave, we put in as a fully drafted bill. They released two bills. They had one that was a concept draft and then they didn't release the one that was fully drafted until May. And so the Speaker and I have been working with the new head of revisers to make it very clear that concept drafts need to change. We were the first leadership pair to actually put a limit on concept drafts. We put a time limit to that committee chair. So say, say they put in our, our concept draft about Harpswell lobster with no other information. When the bill gets called up, the committee chairs, under the new rules that Ryan and I put in, they tell the sponsor, you have one week. If there is not a body of a bill, like you can't anymore stand before a committee and be like, surprise. Like it has to be publicly listed on the website. If you don't get the information to the committee, your bill is rendered dead instantly. So we are, we share, share it. And I know I've just gotten a very large soapbox about that, but I watched the legislature take a hit for something that was not actually people trying to misuse the rules. Um, so there's new guidelines on that. And then the other thing we really are trying to work on is our website is so convoluted for being able to look up bills. We are really like, one thing we are very committed in is my number one chart now, being Senate President, is how do you leave the legislature a better place? And whether you're a fourth grade student in your main studies or you're trying to find out about what legislation might be impacting Zone F, or you wanna come look at the paintings, like I want you to be able to interact with state government from wherever you are. If it is on your boat, if it is at your library and that involves changing a lot of the way we access that information. So we have a new voting software, hopefully that'll be coming out. I won't get to see it, it's gonna take five years to build, so it'll be going live after I'm out of the building. We're working to upgrade the interface for being able to look up said concept drafts. And the other thing I really want to see improved on top of the YouTube channel is just the committee website. So you can go to either of Cheryl's committees and really dig in a little bit deeper and see like all the minutes in the notes. Because we get some really amazing like materials, like we printed off this slideshow from like one of the bills that, from eighteen twenty-nine that Speaker Fecto put together when he presented the bill. But you have to click down on four different pages to even find this. Like that's not.
Probably why I didn't find it.
Exactly. Like that's, I feel like I, I've spent longer than I care to even think about in this building. And the fact that sometimes I still can't even find things on my own bill shows you that we need to fix something. So, sorry, that was a, something I'm very, very, very passionate about.
You know, I, I just have to add to that soapbox just a little bit because, you know, as a first term legislature in the last, last session, I, I had a concept draft, but that concept draft had all the wording and stuff and it was the manufactured, um, housing on single family laws, um, bill. While I was waiting for the wording, but it had all the wording before it came to thing. What I didn't realize is that until I was sitting in committee of the Department of Inland Wildlife Fishery and somebody got up and started talking about a bill that there was no wording for.
Mm-hmm.
None. And there was a gentleman that got up and he's like, so I only know about this bill because I'm here. You know, so this, so I went, I went to leadership at that time, um, and that, you know, what, so this is a really big disenfranchising of our voter system, you know? I, I do understand why we need concept drafts, we do. You know, you'll, you'll be presented with a huge idea and you need time. You only have a certain amount of timeframe to submit your bills. So being able to get that bill in and having enough time to finish the wording. But I don't believe they should be released and we did some of it this, this session.
Yeah.
Um, I actually went to the council and testified on the fact that we needed to change.
Yeah.
Um, what we were doing with the concept drafts. Um, I, I wanted to see it so that when we submitted something, that the wording had to be in place for two weeks before it, that it couldn't get an LD number. It couldn't even get an LD number to be publicized unless all the wording was there. Um, and then it would go through its normal, its normal process. So we made some strides towards that this year.
Yeah.
I, I think we can do more, um, with it and I'm hoping that we do. It, it is an important tool for legislation, especially if, you know, you're coming down to the last week before you gotta put in the thing and something comes up, an emergency from your town or something and you need. But we don't have all the wording.
Yeah.
So, you know, you put it in, you wait and get that, get that wording stuff. So it does, it does, they do have a rule.
Yeah, I think it's more on a placeholder area. That's how we're using them and that's how we urge leadership. Like we gave each committee, you can put in two placeholder bills.
Mm-hmm.
So you could say, you know, I have a bill to deal with the working waterfront. You know, that could be really, really broad, but it's just the title that the committee can introduce. For example, for me, I have one concept draft that's a placeholder. It is our childcare bill that we are currently working with childcare providers to get the feedback for the language. And then that language will be posted publicly for a month before it even goes to hearing. But yeah, we're looking at how, how do you enable committees to be able to have that sort of placeholder? To like be able to respond to stuff, but not have, I, I can remember, it was also used not to keep piling on by legislators who didn't do their homework. So they'd be like, I want a bill on taxes. Be like, great, what kind? Sales tax, income tax, property tax.
Yeah.
And then they'd show up before the committee and they'd be like, well, I'm working with stakeholders. Are you? Can you have languishable Tuesday? Well, I really need another work session. Okay, you get one more. Before you know it, you've had a legislator who clearly has not done their homework.
Yeah.
Just drag it out. So the other reason I wanted them to go the way of the dodo bird is.
Yeah.
That's a waste of everybody's time. Like we're a citizens' legislature, I have a full-time job. Like I didn't need to be sitting there listening to someone not do their homework.
To change things up just a little bit. One of, one of the things, um, I'm on liaison to the recycling committee here.
Yes.
And, um, we're finding that very little plastic, only about seven percent of plastic is actually recycled. And that's only, that's only two types of all the plastic there is. Uh, a lot of plastic goes to Southeast Asia to be burned in factories that make tofu. Uh, this isn't what we, this is not what we ever intended.
Yeah.
Um, so we are planning to, um, visit a recycling facility and then go beyond that. Where do these things go after they leave the recycling facility? So we will be doing some of that work and maybe we'll be coming to you guys with something you might help us with. I am very happy with the, um, with the bill to make the, the package creators responsible for.
EPR.
Yeah, I'm very, we're all happy about that. So thank you. Um, so you will be hearing more from us and maybe we'll be wanting to, uh, work with you on something about recycling.
I'd love to. There's a podcast, um, by a, a group called Throughline. They did a podcast that really sort of exploded my mind as someone who has worked on recycling a lot and cares deeply about it. And it talks about, uh, it's a good introduction to where extended producer responsibility comes from. Highly recommend it. I think it's something about, I think the title's Recycling Myth. I'll, I'll try to find it and send it to you. It's really, really good. Um, but, you know, I, it's something that I care about not only as someone who's grown up on the coast and the plastics and like the crumbled stuff with, like we literally, I was fishing the other day and had a mackerel that I opened up that had literally something clearly plastic-like in it.
Yeah.
Um, and I also care about it as someone who produces something that would qualify for EPR. I mean, one of the reasons my brewery uses cans instead of glasses is because we found out that the glass was not getting recycled and it was actually, uh, it was much more expensive and it oftentimes is just ending up in a landfill versus the aluminum is getting a hundred percent recycling circuit. So that's why, um, we switched to cans and not to be able to do glass. So we gotta, we gotta do something. And it's also a huge, I mean, Brunswick, we're really dealing with the fact that our landfill is gone and we're dealing with our state with Juniper Ridge. Like how do we find a way to really truly recycle, so?
Well, Harpswell was the first recycling center in Maine.
Yes.
We're very proud of that and we would like to, you know, Harpswell people, they wash out their cans. They really try to recycle.
Yeah.
And we're sort of dismayed to hear that things aren't actually being recycled. Um, so we, you know, we wanna work on that.
I found out, I don't know if I should say, well, we found out that our recycling and the legislature was getting dumped in the trash. So my office, we did a little, oh yeah, it's in East Coast. So I can say my office, we, we were able to get it back in the recycling, so.
On that same note, um, from the fisheries side to do with recycling and trash and all that, I and many other fishermen would love to see some sort of ban on Mylar balloons.
Yeah.
You knew how many of those I pick up. I picked up six today hauling and I was only out there till eleven o'clock. Um, or at least make it so if somebody purchases them, their name or phone number or something.
Yeah.
You know, the, the amount of those that end up in the ocean is unfathomable.
We did pass one because same thing, yeah. So we have on the outdoor release, um, there was another portion through EPR, the extent, sorry, using acronyms, Extended Producer Responsibility, to look into banning.
Okay.
Uh, Mylar, also the, um, the like sh, decals that they're putting on cars, like the sort of like not quite shrink wrap they're finding.
Yeah.
Was, was doing sort of a similar thing like the, uh, Mylar balloons. And there's something else. Oh, not to play my millennial card, but Capri Sun, the Tetra Packs, like those things have been a huge issue too.
Yeah.
And looking into those as well. But you wouldn't believe the crazy pushback we got on the balloon release ban. And it was actually a lot of, uh, folks who like work on the waterfront or work in like, who see the like result of it coming through.
We pick them up.
Yeah.
Down in Coors Corner every day.
It's unbelievable.
Well, the aseptic containers were banned at one time and they're back.
Yep.
You know, it's, there's a lot of pressure from, um, you know, people who make money from these things to, um, to do the things that we're doing.
Yeah. I saw some amazing, actually Turn Coffee, I just, I've not actually been in, but I saw two people come to the brewery. Uh, they're a new business in Brunswick. They have these really cool compostable, uh, coffee cups with a cover that looks almost like an origami takeout container that I wanna look into. Yeah, and you can pull it open. Sorry, I can talk about products up too much.
Totally recyclable stuff.
Go ahead, Amy.
Agreed, yeah.
Again, Amy Hyble. Um, I think this is a really interesting discussion that takes us back to eighteen twenty-nine and the affordable housing thing. Um, you mentioned that the recycling center is almost full. And this is, this is why I'm talking about unintended consequences for this kind of bill. We aren't thinking enough about how one thing impacts another and then impacts another. We do need affordable housing, but we also need to think about it in the, in a larger context.
Yeah.
So what would, what is denser dwelling units or denser development do to traffic in an area that already has a traffic problem? What does it do to a town that's, it got it, it's at capacity with its water and sewer? It needs, if it, if it goes over, it's gonna have to build a new sewage treatment plant. This is why I said it's an unfunded mandate, because there are things that need to be considered that have not been considered. And I will go back to, you know, my early days in planning school were all about community building and really looking at the big picture. And I'm thinking about Sunnyside, which was developed in the early part of the twentieth century. I'm talking about, uh, Levittown, which doesn't really have a great reputation at this point. But those folks were looking at workforce housing and affordable housing within a community. And so they built walkable neighborhoods. They built backyards where people could see the playgrounds. They built, they built a community that really worked, where neighbors knew neighbors[1778.01] knew neighbors, and where if you didn't have a car, you could still go and get groceries. This is the kind of thing that I think we need to think about when we think about affordable housing. Look at the big picture, and look at it in terms of building community. So we have architects in this state, we have planners in this state, why not have a statewide competition for architects and planners to design communities that are livable, and then start doing those kinds of building projects? Instead of leaving it to a private developer who really is just looking at their own bottom line. So if we're going to do it, yes, we, we need to do it, but let's not just pass the buck on down and say, we hope that this works. Really take the bull by the reins, or the horse by the reins, whatever the saying is, and, and look at the big picture.
Yeah.
You know, if you believe in affordable housing, then do the work and look at all the components. Look at how these people will have to live, that live in these places.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I'd like to respond to that. There's an assumption that the work that's gone into affordable housing in 1829 was short-sighted, and I, I would disagree with that. I think the work that's in 1829, I know it has, because I sat on the commission that created the, the regulations that ended up into law for LD 2003, and this is built off of that. So, and the other, I just do want to add, we do have a problem with traffic down here and speeding and stuff like that. Studies have shown that long-term housing does not create more traffic. What is creating more traffic in our town is, we are a tourist town, we, and is short-term rentals. If I got a short-term rental on my road-
And people having to commute farther.
...and they're renting it out once a week to 20 different people, you got 20 different cars coming in and out of there, and you have one family that may work in the town of Harpswell. So long-term housing in a town doesn't necessarily create more housing. I mean, we used to have a school that had what, over 400 students in it?
Mm-hmm.
You know? And stuff, and we watched that close down because we've watched families have to leave.
Yeah, there are a lot of components.
This town was about affordable housing. I just am, you know, clarifying some of, some of the things that you stated from my, my point of view, and, you know, water and sewer is always an issue, but according to what I've been told by the state hydrologists and other people, is that we actually have a whole bunch of water in Harpswell. Problem is one fractured bedrock.
Yep.
So we may have an area of housing over here that, yes, their well is not adequate for many reasons over here, but we have a population over here that has all kind of water. I mean, you know, you look at the schools, that was a prime example, with all those kids and everything else, there was not an issue with water in that area. I know I lived in the end of reason, at the end of that road for many years.
Well, maybe you should talk to Cara Douglas, because she runs out of water. It's very sporadic, you can't, you can't tell.
I know, and it is because of a fractured bedrock, and it's, and it's where it's all, it's all located, it's, it's complicated, and it needs to be looked at, no question about it.
Yeah.
But it's not that we don't have enough water, it's where it is and, and how we-
It's also the, the quality of water, but you know that.
The state hydrologist stated that we have, I think it was either three or four times, the populous of water.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's, yeah, we need to look better, we need to be better informed at where our wells are, and, and all sorts of stuff.
And that's, that's a gross number, it doesn't really, it doesn't touch on water quality. But the other thing about traffic is, in, in the early eighties, we saw, 1980s, we saw a huge increase in traffic in the state of Maine, in many different communities. The population, however, wasn't growing. What was happening was, we were having more two-person households.
Yep.
So it, it, it's not even the result of population per se, it's a result of the number of households. And those households each had a, two people, each person had a car, and that's part of the, the, the challenge about Harpswell. Affordable, if you need to have a car in order to get to work, the average car payment is almost as much as a mortgage, the car payment and the insurance and the maintenance. So if you're talking about low-income households, you got to build that cost in, because it costs money to maintain a car and to get to and from employment centers. People aren't necessarily going to be working in Harpswell, they're probably going to be working in Brunswick. So this is not an employment center, and it probably never will be. So that's a whole other thing. It's complicated, is what I'm saying.
It is complicated, and transportation across our entire state is horrendous. We need public transportation everywhere. I'm a firm supporter of that, you know, and I don't feel like our, our Department of Transportation builds roads for walkability and for-
They definitely do not.
-public transportation, they build them for speed, you know? So I have these headlong discussions all the time. What, what I will continue to say about this town is economically, if we do not find a balance, we're going to watch, are we going to wait and watch our other school close?
I don't think so, they actually have more students now than they did. They actually have a lot more going, you know?
We have to buy the West Harpswell school back.
Fabulous volunteerism.
Really, I think so. Yeah, we may have to buy the old school back, or build a new school. But anyway, I'm just saying it's complicated, and, and if we really want to solve the, the affordable housing problem, it's a community building problem. It's not just building units, it's who is going to live there and have a quality of life? And that's what, that's really what concerns me. So I want to just echo what Matt said, and thank you for your, all you do for us.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in and get a couple of words. I do just want to be very clear on LD 1829, this is not our bill, this is not, this was literally just Speaker Fecto's bill. It did have a unanimous report out of committee. As, as Cheryl and I both said, we share a lot of the concerns, but I do want to talk a little bit more about what you said about community building and the whole like process. I completely agree, and that is why we created the committee that Cheryl is on, because we discovered, you know, not discovered, I've seen it since I got in when I was 25 and I ran, because I couldn't, you know, I could barely afford to stay in Brunswick, I was working four jobs. Like I actually, we make nothing as legislators, and getting healthcare enabled me to stay in my hometown. And housing bills when I first got in were an afterthought, they were not something that, you know, really was a focus of the legislature, and so the reason we put this committee in was to be able to try to have those longer-reached, longer-term conversations, and not have it be something that people think of every two years when they're trying to, you know, get re-elected and think it's the right word. We want to have that holistic approach, and I will say for myself, I can't speak for, and, and I, I feel like I can speak a little bit for Cheryl, because she and I talk about this, and we represent the same area, but I am really, really passionate about this, and I think, I think a lot of the state is failing, and I will say that is both the state, that is also municipalities, and one of the things that I am personally doing in my life, sort of in addition to the legislature, I actually started this work with Eloise Vitelli, is I think we need to, it's not just the community outreach, we need to stop thinking in silos, because the traffic you're talking about is exactly it, and if you only consider Harpswell, you don't consider Brunswick, you're going to set yourself up for failure, because you have folks who are moving here, and the reason you have your traffic coming is because they used to be able to live downtown in Brunswick, and now that's all been bought up by one gentleman who's turning them into short-term rentals, so they're moving here. And so I actually worked with Senator Vitelli, and we had created three years ago, which I would like to see happen in more communities, a regional map that we overlaid all of the zoning, the transportation hubs, and the major employers. And we actually pushed BIW and Midcoast Hospital and others to come to this meeting to find that public, public-private partnership, and look where we could put, it's not just affordable housing, it's the workforce housing. They, you know, I regularly talk to folks who've gotten new jobs at the yard, and they're making more money than I can, and they're sleeping in their car because they can't find housing. So from those conversations, by not having it siloed and having that more holistic outside of the box, they're able to locate, you know, using Eloise and I, the facilitators, facilitators, to places that they were able to build housing to get people closer to public transportation, to BIW. But this is something, even when I'm out of the legislature, I'm going to keep working on. This is, you know, I grew up with a father who built houses, I've watched the idea of being able to have a house completely sip, slip out of the fingers of most of us, the only reason, I could not afford to be the state senator for the district I live in now, if I had not put everything I had to buy a $180,000 house. That's what I thought my budget was, I still couldn't find one in Brunswick except for over 200, and now you can't buy anything in the district I represent. I think the median price now is $700,000. Now granted, I represent larger than our two communities, so that, not to get in another soapbox, but housing is where my heart is outside of there, and we need to be thinking too often, we forget about the human in the home, we forget about where that human has to go, who that human is going to live with, and what, I'll say Elle on my team, who's one of my policy directors, she does a lot of work on zoning, and looking at what the zoning laws are everywhere. And the best zoning that I've seen, and the best comprehensive plans have that human-centered in the plan, like when you are having that density, making sure it's centered where someone can take it, where it is able to be able to work with the traffic in the school systems. And so, you know, while this one piece of legislation might not seem like it fits with that, there are a lot of us who are going to continue asking the questions, continuing pushing the state, continue pushing main state housing, pushing municipalities to remember that when they're making these decisions. And I, I do just want to say, I always check, because my dad also is a stormwater engineer, on all of these, that there is the ability for the municipalities to turn down any of these ADUs, because, you know, there's a lot of potential with them. Ryan is very passionate about them, I've talked to folks who've built these, but if your sewer system and your aseptic system can't handle it, or if you're on, you know, bedrock, I will always only vote for a bill if it has the exception for the town to decline that. So that's my other side note. Anyways, that's my soapbox.
Well, probably a good place to wrap it up, you think?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would just add, I, once again, sorry, I hope, speaking of transportation, I would rather avoid 295 with the fiber of everybody, my being, but it has been, one, the honor of my life to be able to represent this area that I've grown up in, and, you know, getting to be up in Augusta and work with all of you is just absolutely incredible, and please, we'd be happy to come back, happy to talk, I didn't get to really talk about sort of the greater sort of policy aspects that we're trying to accomplish, but the one thing I'll also throw out is we're coming up on cloture, we have to have new bill ideas in by September 26th. It's the emergency session though, so very few bills will get through, so it has to go before a body of our peers, and you have to tell the legislature why it's an emergency, but if you do have a piece of emergency legislation, which I will be honest, we have heard, and the Housing Committee I know is already talking about it, there will be an emergency bill to fix LD 1829. So if you have any ideas like that, please reach out to Cheryl and I, because that deadline is coming up pretty quickly.
Do you have a few minutes after? I was going to follow up on that, 1829, I understand it has some drafting areas-
Yep.
-and it, which has made it more confusing.
Yeah.
But there will be a bill coming in an emergency session that I am sure that will get through to, to fix the drafting areas that are in it. And again, that, that will be a bill that gets public hearings, that gets, you know, testimony and, and everybody's input. So between that and the rulemaking sessions and stuff that's happening right now, there's time for people to get their, their input, and, and about all of it. And I just, you know, I, I'm totally honored to represent this area, I grew up here, you know, and representing the community up there, and, yeah, I don't think you'll find a politician that you're going to agree with 100%, ever.
I don't agree with my family 100%.
You know? So, you know, but I, but I do love what I do, and I appreciate the reality to be able to do it. And I just, you know, I, what I say to everybody is, my, my door is always open, you know, my phone number on my card, it's my cell phone, so if you call me, you're going to get me. And, and stuff, and whether we agree on something or we disagree on something, I'm more than happy to have the conversations and find any information that you need, if I can, I can't always, but I do a pretty good job at finding who people can get the information from.
Well, thank you guys for, for doing it, I, I know how tough it is. Thank you very much.
I do just want to add, and I have two copies of the 1829 PowerPoint that was on the website that I found, and the other shout-out, I think you mentioned it Cheryl, is the Main Office of Community Affairs, our new statewide planning office. I'm really excited for that, so. I'll throw those both out, and if anyone wants a copy of these.
So I just want to throw out there, I talked about trying to set up something, it looks like I'm going to be able to set up something between my schedule, between everybody's